Hey everybody, and welcome to a special edition of the planning commission podcast. Planning for the snow and an open right of way, the holiday season, planning commission style.
The planning commission podcast is a discussion you never even knew you needed. Sit back, join us for a conversation between a couple of old friends and their guests to talk about all the things that are happening in this wide ranging profession called planning. Our views are our own and don't reflect those of any national planning organizations or any particular public agencies and only belong to us. So read your commission packet, know your Robert's rules and enjoy this, the planning commission podcast.
All right, let's do a roll call commissioner Minshall.
Present.
Commissioner Kostelik.
Ready for presence.
Ah, very much. I love it. And then I'm here. Hopefully some of you are watching this because there's some festivities. Uh, on your screen, if you're, if you're unable to, you're missing out on, we all have our A game on, I think for celebrating this season. And uh, if you have, if you're listening to it, go over to YouTube and watch it yourself. So, all right. Our discussion today is going to be all about the holiday season, planning style, and what's been good, what's been bad and everything in between. So our agenda, our force, our, our item, our whiskey pairing, our interview with ourselves and our lightning round commissioner, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second glass of eggnog.
Second glass of eggnog. There we go. All right. Wonderful. So that's done. Just as a reminder, you can find all our past meetings on our website, www dot the planning commission podcast.com head over to our YouTube channel, Amazon, Apple, Spotify, subscribe, like, and definitely give us feedback. We appreciate that. So our discussion item, just to start this, this episode off, tell me, what's something that the planning world affects? That is holiday themed that you enjoy? What are we good at this time of year? Is there anything that we could point to that we do go, you know, something that kind of works? Either of you have an idea to start?
Well, I can kick us off. Uh, for sure. Turning communities into Hallmark movies.
Hallmark movies.
Right. I mean, there's multiple examples of that, but um, it just seems like there's something about the month of December that all that place making and getting people downtown. You know, tends to work. Uh, flip side of that is we don't necessarily keep it the rest of the year, but we definitely have Hallmark movies going on throughout downtowns.
We need like planning for Christmas where two people bond over writing a staff report and come together for their first day right after a PNC meeting.
Wow, wow.
They haven't touched, well, maybe, maybe our listeners who are Hallmark Christmas movie fans can see if there's been a planning related one because they say, I'm not up to speed on that.
I, I think that would not be that popular.
Two planner ones. One staff report and a magic moment. I like it. Very good. Okay. All right. Do we, dude, I haven't worked in a government office in forever. When was the last time mistletoe was hung above a doorstep? Probably about 83, maybe?
I think there's about seven policies against that. So let's, let's not go there.
Yeah, it's at least seven. All right. Don, you got one?
I really of the planning profession for kind of taking the month of December off and giving us consultants some breathing room. For things we just kind of know in the field, not a whole lot's going on in December. You can put your nose down and either write reports or take some time off until they have the RFP that's due the day after New Year's. That's the one that, that sticks, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's because in the public sector, we expect you to be doing work in the month of December. That's why it's due.
It is doing work. At least we just don't, you know, we're not going to have public meetings typically in December unless it's just some check the box exercise. Actually, I did have a public meeting this previous Monday in December, so I'm breaking my own code right there.
Yeah, uh, I'm going to go kind of similar to what Sabrina said. I'm all about the lights, man. Give me the lights. Give me the, you know, the kind of big bowl. I saw something the other day. Uh, I don't know how far, how far is over the top? I don't know. When it comes to the holiday season, kind of to your point, we, we make an exception, I guess, to a degree anyway. And seeing people, um, you know, now going to drone shows in their own like front yard. Like, wow, ah, maybe that's a bit much. I don't know, but.
Yet we still have people reporting kids for selling lemonade in areas that aren't zoned for it, but you know, 12 foot tall skeletons in yards hanging up Christmas lights are okay.
Something about lights and dark skies and hearing something on the radio, maybe as you're kind of going around is, is, uh, it does bring joy. I don't know why we just kind of come January, see you later. All right. We'll be crotchety until maybe fourth of July or something. I don't know, but. Anyway, all right. Well, those are fun. I think we've, we touch on a little bit, the event planning certainly is a major one. Seeing all these ice ribbons going everywhere and, you know, and so on and so forth. So, all right, Don whiskey pairing, let's, let's have you at least head this off.
Yeah, we're just going to go with our favorite Christmas spirit, and I can say that I've um, mulled mine over a little bit as we've prepared for this episode.
Mulder's over. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, we'll go with Commissioner Danley kicking it off since we always get to go first since you're playing MC roles. What's your favorite Christmas potent potable?
Um, you know, I, I, I mean, of course the, the go-to is easy on the eggnog side of things. It's interesting. Like we just bust out this funky drink. Or December made of eggs and heavy, heavy cream. And I don't know, I guess it's fitting, but you know, I'm going with a good hot toddy. I think I can go with that, you know, just something warm. It's in the evening time and pick your, pick your poison or if it's brandy or if it's some other thing. But I'm pretty simple in that respect. I'm, I'm all good with something nice and toasty in the evening, especially when the snow is flying here in Boise. Looking out the window and, you know, I'll go with that. It's, it's pretty easy. Maybe you need that shot, especially after you open up all the presents and stuff Christmas morning. But that's, that's kind of where I'm going. What do you got?
Good. Uh, how about go with, uh, I'm going to go with the year. I'm recollecting back to the year that I was up till 1:00 AM. Putting together an outdoor basketball hoop that Santa had apparently left and got the fricking pole upside down. And it was kind of jammed in there. So I'm putting dry lubricant in there, trying to get it done. And I can tell you that just some straight up Jack Daniels, uh, was the cure for that. So given the way my year has been, that might be the same thing come this Christmas Eve.
Perfect. So.
All right.
Sabrina, what do you got?
I am a hot buttered rum girl. I do not like eggnog, but hot buttered rum or mulled red wine.
That's interesting.
I can definitely go with the red wine. I stayed at a hotel on a project this year that because I guess they think I'm a VIP, I got like a cheap bottle of red table wine. So that's been sitting there waiting for, for Christmas.
Hopefully you didn't put it in the microwave.
No, no.
No, I mean, just, but mold wine with some, you know, good spices and cinnamon in it. It's very good.
Why are you an anti-eggnog?
I, I, oh, there's just so many reasons. I don't even know where to start that. Uh, the heavy cream, basically drinking eggs like just doesn't do it for me.
Okay. So what if it, so if it's pumpkin spice eggnog?
No, it's that you're just getting worse and worse. The more adjectives you add, the worse this is getting.
Gotcha.
I mean, nothing good goes with the word nog. Right? I mean, do we, do we have other nogs? I don't know. I, maybe there is their pumpkin nog.
Probably. We should just change the subject now. It's getting worse and worse. Everybody's grimacing when they're listening.
All right. So we got our drinks. Let's, uh, let's move forward. We're going to go to the, at least thank our partners here real quick. So we'll take a quick moment and thank our friends at Plan Edison for supporting today's podcast. If you're looking to sharpen your urban planning skills and advance your planning career, head on over to Plan Edison courses, which offers over 300 courses on cutting edge planning topics and skills. Such as parking before missing middle housing, equity analysis and climate resilience. Visit courses dot plan edison.com forward slash PC10 to take advantage of an exclusive offer for planning commission podcast listeners. So let's jump into our sort of annual year in review, who we're thankful for, who were, who were not so happy about and, and all that kind of stuff. So let's start with this. What's been the best part, the best part, let's focus on that positive of your planning year? Year in review, thinking about it. It's been a lot of stuff's gone on, right? In the world and the economies, local, big time macro economy stuff. And lots of stuff in the planning realm, but what do you think? What's been the best part of your planning, planning year commissioner Minshall, you go first. Let's hear it.
All right. So I'll give a, a true professional one. I usually try to stick away from examples, uh, in my own work, but I'm going to use one. Um, I have seen this year for us where I work, just awesome partnership happening between cities and counties about not having multiple visions of what an area looks like. Elected officials and, and planning staff talking together. Um, it's just, it's been a really great example of when you get people in the room and, and take the time to talk about it. You just see some good things happening. So I've seen that in other places throughout the country that I visited too of, you know, our public, everybody who works on things doesn't always know. Am I in the city or I'm in the county or what special district am I in? Um, so I've just, I've seen some really good highlights of that, that I'm actually very grateful for. And I think while it takes longer, it definitely is going to get us to better results.
That's great. Um, I'm happy to hear that because I know in the last year in particular for me, I've, I've worked in a lot of communities where, um, the county has a, has a bigger role. Then what I've experienced professionally in years past and, you know, certain places where it might as well be the city. It looks like the city, but it's not incorporated and kind of going question, you know, like, why is this happening? But that, that relationship is a tricky one because yeah, is what's the role of a county? Is it to grow? Is it to foster urban development or is it to hand that development baton off to the cities? As the cities tend to grow and so forth. And I mean, it's a philosophical one that I think we've seen in different parts of the country and, but uh, that's good to hear. I'm glad that things are going well in that arena. So.
Well, and I think. Specific example of something where that turned out, I know you can't be specific to location and that, but you saw this cooperation. What was it over?
Well, I think really it was over, but from a planning perspective, uh, really all the things Chris said, you know, what parts of the county is, is a city planning for? Is the county engaged with that? What's the pace of which you could have a plan, but like, how does that actually transition? You know, all the things that Chris just said are all true. Sometimes it's to facilitate growth. Folks have property that they want to do something with, right? And sometimes it's to help encourage it to become part of the city and just that interaction, especially in those areas of impact, which is how it's described here in Idaho, but even in, you know, other states where it's considered more growth management areas. Those are some really tricky conversations because it's not just the relationship between the city and the county. It's the property owners and the public. And, you know, the growth pressures, especially those are not a, you know, check one box type of question. So those are some really good examples I've seen that, you know, in those areas, you know, which is city, which is county.
And I think even an era where I think we just know even down to the local government areas, what's happening politically now in so many places is so kind of off the rocker, not from a planning perspective, but overall politically. So we don't even hear those stories enough. Uh, local and, and national news media. So I think that's another good feather in the cap or orange in the stocking or whatever it may be.
Oh yeah. An exation. Holy cow. I mean, that's not, that's, that's not controversial at all, right? There's people, shouldn't be, but there's people who I think make it out, uh, you know, in certain instances and every situation a little bit different, of course, but anyhow. All right, Don, what do you got? What's been one of your highlights of the, the planning year? Give me at least one.
Yeah. Well, I've got two. I've got one that I guess will be a present under the tree and one that would be, uh, in the stocking. I think seeing across the board, cities large and small, starting to realize our broken housing policy. And working forward, sometimes in the face of really stiff opposition and misinformation campaigns. And putting it out there just to relax those laws and allow us to truly let the market and other factors take over to just open that up. And as I've seen stories this year from even where we are in Boise of a major zoning code rewrite to small cities like Auburn, Maine. You know, doing the same kind of thing. I think that's a shift overall in the planning profession of true policy change. That I've not really experienced over my 20 plus year career. The second one would be, and this is the stocking one, is the federal government finally getting off their bum and moving the public right of way accessibility guidelines into final rule. So they're no longer drafted and we no longer have to have this fight over ADA compliance and which thing to follow. So that thing's been, that's been sitting there spec since I believed in Santa Claus, I think. So that's how long it has taken to.
Wait, 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 wait. Did you just say when you believed in Santa Claus?
Yeah.
Cause, cause I think that just ruins it if you don't believe in Santa Claus.
Well, he does have a grinch over his shoulder. I mean.
That's true. That's true.
Um, so, okay. I'm going to give you an opportunity. Take 30 seconds, no more than 30 seconds. Understand what I just said. I'm one more time, 30 seconds on this. Explain what the heck you just said. For, for many people who listen to this podcast, ADA accessibility, give the background. Because it's an important evolution in this, I'm going to say fight for equal access in our public realm and our, in our built environment. But give our audience who may not know what you just said, a little bit more context.
So 30 years since the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, we have never had solid standards by which to design streets, sidewalks, curb ramps, crosswalks, pedestrian signals that truly meant this is the requirement for ADA compliance. It's been in this draft form state for, for two decades of those three decades. And it's gone through different machinations with, uh, presidential administrations and other things. So we are finally on the cusp of having that as the ADA standard for streets across the country. Which one sets forth better improvements, things should be built better, but also gives a little bit more legality for the agencies that are still kind of acting like ADA is just some sidebar thing that they don't have to comply with.
There you go. There you go. It is incredibly important. Now that stability is there and it's time to finally push off from those excuses that, you know, agencies have been using for the last decade plus, and it's, it's, let's get after it. And for those agencies who have been moving forward saying, hey, we anticipate this. They're in the catbird seat, right? I think they've done a good job of that. And so, yeah, it's a big deal. That's for sure. Um, my best, one of the best things for my planning year is I, I've been really super fortunate, man. I, you know, and I recognize this as a private uh, recognition, I guess, in, in terms of a, of a company, but I've been for very fortunate to be associated with blue zones, very proud of it. And, and working on all these communities across this, really across the country, but such, especially in the West. And just trying to figure out the ways that we can improve our built environment for, for the betterment of public health. And man, that is me to AT and it is, it has been so humbling, flattering and honoring. Uh, and honor to really get in there and work on behalf of a group I believe in. And I've been really fortunate, man. I, I've been able to work in Bakersfield, for example. Here's one of the deadliest cities in America, year after year after year. And I'm proud to say. For pedestrians. And I'm proud to say that just recently they passed a complete street ordinance, not a resolution, but an ordinance. And actually with teeth and meaning. And that's exactly why we're trying to do the work we're doing. And it's not just about, here's the key to the city. Okay, cool. Well, that's great. What is it open? Nothing. Well, okay. Better luck next time. So it's all about an ordinance and, and actually having law behind it. And that's, that's good for them, man. I'm so happy for them that, you know, I know that the projects that will come from that will reflect this change in philosophy. And I'm super thrilled to have, you know, been an integral part of, of really pushing them forward on that. And so blue zones for me has just been such an amazing vehicle to get out and to do work in fantastic places with people who are trying to, to make good things happen. And uh, it's just been a great year in that regard.
Are you going to be mulling some of that special blue zones, Italian wine, antioxidant wine, whatever that is that the sommeier at the Almond's told you?
Canada, Canada. I don't know if. I don't know if I've shared that story on the podcast. I, I, I don't know. You're shaking your head. Have you heard that Sabrina, have you mentioned?
I, I think you did on a recent podcast about that story. I was, I was laughing because every time you say blue zones, I think of like the blue caraco they put in them, in the mixed drinks. It is like electric blue. So maybe that's the challenge you, the new year is, you know, you need to do a, a special drink to celebrate the blue zones.
I, I can dig it. I can dig it. Well, that's for me, one of the big parts of my year, there's been another bunch of other highlights, of course. And I think it's been, you know, frankly, a, a pretty good, solid one. Uh, but let's move forward. I'm going to go to the next question here and who deserves a present? Who deserves a recognition of good work? And that could be a person, that could be an organization. It could be a geography, you know, whatever it might be, however, we want to define that, you know, who is it that deserves a present? Um, I'm going to go first on this one and I, and I'm just being selfish. Don kind of alluded to it when he spoke. Um, because I think he's on to something and that is that boy, oh, boy, we are clearly seeing this massive shift happening coast to coast. On housing reforms, specifically zoning. And it's an irony. I think it's a great big irony because us as planners were frankly, one of the organizations that put those rules into place to begin with. And now we're saying, well, maybe those rules weren't so great. And we're going to remove those rules and let things kind of fall, the chips fall as they made. I mean, that's kind of what's happening, right? Um, but my present goes to the city of Austin, Texas planning.
Oh, you did that. So you could take mine.
I had no idea you were going to say that, but they're, they're.
We were all kind of on the same page with some of that stuff too, right?
Um, I, I guess we were so, uh, sorry. I, I pulled, I pulled the rug out from underneath you. But for those who have been living under a rock, the city of Austin was, man, they've, they have run through, been run through the wringer, right? And they tried to do a pretty big code rewrite and it was met with all kinds of opposition in a lot of ways. And I think it went into the state legislature, of course. And it really was, I think, the front page of this movement for quite a number of years. And despite everything that they went through, right? They kept forging ahead, kept believing that they needed to do something and they did. And they actually made some pretty meaningful shifts to their code just recently that will very likely improve housing conditions for their current and future residents of the capital city of Texas. And it's growing like crazy and they need to adjust. And I think good for them for sticking with it and, and getting something over the finish line. So sorry about that. What do you got?
So I, I'm, I'm going next before Dawn takes it, but I'm just gonna, I am gonna tag on though. Austin was the one I said. I think I've shared it on a previous podcast. We had the pleasure of being down there in the first part of October. Um, for the international city county management association conference. And I love their tourism slogan of keep Austin weird. Um, you know, I just think it plays into a lot of things we talked about as planners is you got to brand yourself and actually have something behind it of being unique. You know, and Austin doesn't want to fit the mold. They are all about how they're connecting their neighborhoods. We went to a super cool, I think like 1960s, 1970s mini golf place that I don't think had been updated, uh, since then. Um, and it was packed like just the nostalgia, the, you know, cool old honky tonk bars, but the culture was hopping, all sorts of parts of it. Uh, and they've just done a good job of implementing too. I mean, it's good to have a plan, but they've also already been making steps towards just, they look at everything differently. They, they are not satisfied with the status quo, and I love that.
So I think what we have just determined, and this may, might be a call to our listeners. We need somebody from Austin, Texas to, to be on our show. We need someone who has some institutional knowledge, some scars that they have earned, right? And, and now can, can regale in the success, maybe with some sort of a mold wine of some kind, right? But, uh, we need that person. So if you're out there listening, watching, and you know exactly who that might be, here's our call question. Who is it? Send us their information. We appreciate it. All right, Don, what do you got?
I'm going to go with, uh, I, you know, two guests or I guess one guest, sorry. But two mayors in the Intermountain West, I think Aaron Mendenhall from Salt Lake City and just continuing to see the way them, like Austin are marching toward rethinking their place, uh, and what they do as a city, even at, at the point now going after a major league baseball team. And, and definitely amping up that city specter. And then here in our own backyard, uh, Mayor McLean here in Boise, who just won reelection. Uh, after a lot of, of consternation from some sides about the zoning code rewrite, but plowed through unanimous vote on PNC, unanimous vote on, uh, the city council and December 1st, that, that zoning code went into effect. So there's two mayors, Intermountain West, both in states that aren't as supportive like Austin of the type of things cities want to see on that front. So kudos to both of them.
Very good. Yeah. Yeah. And man, Mayor, Mayor Mendenhall, I, I think we were all kind of paying close attention to that race when it happened here recently. And just seeing if she could get another opportunity to do the things that she's trying to do. And she was great, uh, when, when we had a chance to interview her and congratulations to her and certainly to Lauren McLean here in Boise, no doubt as well. So yeah, okay. Good, good. I like that. Any other presence that deserve to be out there? I mean, I guess the only thing I mean, it's a trend. I guess we kind of talked about this a bit last season and also with one of our guests, the real guru of parking. Uh, but I, I, I continue to see across the country on, on that front, the parking reduction discussion about, you know, more and more recognition of just saying, you know what? We're just going to get rid of this and just say, you know, let's figure it out and let's, let's use on-street parking. Let's not have to force so much parking down our throats. And here we are in the Christmas and holiday season, seeing so much of the shift in our, our consumption behavior, right? And just going, man, even at the busiest time of year, we're still in many instances, not seeing all that parking being used. And I think we're really in the midst of seeing this real, um, I don't know what the right term is, but this, this retail shift. And now you see cities and, and states even trying to push the, 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 the change from those uses into residential, right? Adaptive reuse in a way and just kind of constantly saying, well, we're not buying as much stuff in brick and mortar. So let's have this land do something else. And, and a part of it comes back to that parking as well. I think there's opportunities with some of those lots to reinvent ourselves in a more modern way. But I don't know. I think that's something else that is happening all across this country as well, though. All right. Who deserves coal? Let's go. Don't hide.
Homeowners associations. You get the coal this year. Let's not even talk about your racist foundations and your roots. You're probably to the point of banning books from little free libraries right now.
Wow.
All the other BS you go through and useless stuff that you do related to what flags can be hung from balconies and all these other things. So yeah.
We are in a therapy moment here.
Yeah. Don't get me started on homeowners associations.
I don't think we had to. You already did it.
Go away. Go away. We don't need you in 2024. There you go. I'm done.
Wow.
All right.
I want to know how many violations the Kostelik family has received on there.
None. I live in a place that doesn't have them. Thank God.
You feel better? Feel, I feel like that was cathartic a little bit, you know?
Okay.
Wow. Yeah. I live in a place where the HOA was formed when it was in its infancy, but has been long gone. And, um, yeah, everything's okay. We're, we're, we're managing to move forward and everything's okay.
And I live in a neighborhood with a very active HOA and my husband is on the HOA board. At one point, he, at one point, he was thinking about when he retired, he would run for city council. And in my, uh, laughing wisdom for my own enjoyment, I said, well, why don't you do the HOA board for a couple of years first and see how you feel about it? Um, I have had some choice, uh, comments directed my way since that time of what he has thought about it. But, uh, it, it definitely has some interesting dynamics, especially when you get HOAs involved with, uh, social media.
You know, that, that's another topic we haven't broached on this, on this podcast is HOAs. And the, the effects that they could have, maybe, maybe the good, maybe the, the not so good. And I'm afraid to touch that though. Apparently one of us might, might lose their mind. Uh, if we, if we approach that in any, any more fashion, but I keep, whenever I think of HOA and I'm dating myself here, but that's okay. I keep thinking back to the old fire marshal Bill days of in loving color when he just, let me show you something. And I, that's the crotchety old man kind of a thing that is enforcing all those little, I don't know, how important are some of those rules? But maybe, maybe Commissioner Minshall's husband should join us and he has a whole different take on it. I don't know.
I think it would be fun to get a few HOA board members and see how people think about it. I would think a fun topic would also just be social media in era of planning, because there's good and bad things about that. And keyboard warriors that you also sometimes get some good perspectives. So there's another topic, especially around big projects.
Tough. Yeah. Everybody's a tough guy, which that's a perfect segue and I'm going to, I'm going to do. Tough. Yeah, everybody's a tough guy, which that's a perfect segue and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do mine next just because of what you just said. Who deserves coal? I'm going with the NIMBYs, the collective NIMBYs in the world.
That was on my candidate list, so.
I've seen some examples in the last year where, you know, I, I'm just, it's just maddening. I see. And I'll go like, for example, I'll give you a specific one where you, you do a parking study of on-street parking and you go, are you kidding me? Like twenty, twenty-five percent of this is used at maximum. And yet, when you want to reuse some of that pavement for really good separated bicycle infrastructure going, we can do something different with this and something meaningful. We all know that on that world that if you just put paint out, it isn't going to work very well. But if you do something more meaningful, vertical, separated, all right, people got that. They're gonna use that. Well, that's gonna take some space. And so I've seen people come out of the woodwork, man. You start talking about parking. Oh gosh, it's just, it's that third rail sometimes and entire neighborhoods. You know, or not even, I should back that up. A few people from a neighborhood who can buoy a, a good project. One that went through a process, had support, but because of the delay in the public implementation part of it, it might've been two years ago when they had a public meeting. Oh, we gotta do it again. No, you didn't get any of the input from the public. No, we did. But, you know, it takes a minute to get these things done. And man, that NIMBY movement is, is tough. And I, you know, look, man, everybody deserves to express their opinions. This, you know, you're, you're a member of a, of a community, you pay your taxes, you do your thing. And, and I, I think that's a critical point. We can't all just be shaking our head up and down in agreement all the time. Um, but I'm so, so excited that there's this YIMBY movement that continues to grow and just go, no, we do want that thing. Give it to us, you know, and let's, 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 let's experience and at least try it out. So uh, so coal for all the, the NIMBYs out there. There you go. Sabrina, what do you got?
Solutions to the table.
Yeah.
And do that. And I think most planning and zoning commissions, most developers, most city councils are gonna kind of give something to that and, and at least give their best to try to get it. And somebody may be stubborn, but I mean, we're starting to hear stories now of, you know, part one, city just basically abhors anything multifamily, don't want to do any of it, you know, because of the NIMBYs. And then all of a sudden, hey, we have to close schools because we don't have enough enrollment of them and the same people are coming out, don't do this. Well, hey, guess what? If you had more housing that was suitable for people who have kids, guess what? Your schools might not be closing and connecting those dots just doesn't seem to happen all that much in that realm.
All right. We have one more commissioner who, who works in the public realm. So I know that this is delicate, but let's see if she can navigate her way through. Who deserves coal?
All right. So I'm gonna keep one kind of broad, but sort of behind me, it's, uh, blurred out. I'm visiting outside of the Seattle area right now. Um, and you know, I usually get up this area. This is in King County, but not directly related to in, in Seattle. I get up here about every four to five months. And each time I've come up with this area, I am completely disappointed of how these smaller cities continue to spread out and grow together when this region especially knows better. Uh, what I started to see this, this area, um, is you know, there's this big pineapple express storms coming through with lots and lots of moisture, which it's always gray here. But having very, very serious flooding in some of these areas in this Puget Sound where you've got water flowing over the run, you know, the roadways, um, areas, creeks are, are crossing it. But when you look, it's because they're cutting down trees and clear cutting areas for development where any small areas, they're all growing together and they don't have the infrastructure to place. And then the call of, what do you think's gonna happen, right? Like the natural environment's gonna tell you that doesn't work. Um, and it's, it's really disappointing. It's been really disappointing and you see the ramifications big time.
Seattle, did you not learn from Houston?
Yeah.
So nature's filtration system has been, uh, knocked down, cut down and replaced with inadequate human-built filtration systems and stormwater and all that collection and everything. Wow, that's a very specific one.
It, it is, but it's really disappointing. And it, you know, when you see a big storm like this come through, and especially in areas like, you know, coastal areas, you can see the writing on the wall.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, we're, maybe we'll have to reach out to somebody in Seattle and, and, uh, or at least not in the city of Seattle. But some, another one around it. Yep, yep, yep. All right. Well, there you go. What was our, our best of the planning year? Who deserves present? Who deserves coal? Quick couple lightning rounds and we'll call this an episode. Uh, I'm curious, what do you hate in your stocking? Go ahead, let us know. What's, what do you get in your stocking? You're like, oh gosh, I don't, I don't want that. Is anything, I'll tell you, I want this was years ago. Maybe it's, maybe it's the word, I'll change it for you, make it easier. What's the worst thing you've ever had in, in your stocking that you couldn't believe? For me, I, I had a, a family member who's not listening. It's okay. Years ago, they're, they're very, very traditional and that's okay. That's fine. But I was an idiot kid. I didn't know any better. So I was used to getting like baseball cards and candy and all, you know, I go to their house and it's filled with, you know, whole walnuts and dried apricots and, and stuff as a kid, as a nine-year-old, I'm like, uh, this is, this is gross. I don't want to eat this stuff.
I don't want that when I'm trick or treating. I don't want it at Christmas.
Now I'd probably would appreciate it to be honest, but at the time I'm just going, oh man, this is, this isn't what I was used to. So kind of made me laugh. And here I am, a bunch of years like an idiot, you know, re, revisiting that story. All right. What do you got?
So mine is always, and I have to say, I was guilty of this when my kids were younger. Uh, you know, toothbrush, toothpaste, uh, you know, like those, those things that you're like, you just went to the grocery store. Uh, but you know, like, hey, here's all these things you have to have and, uh, but it's cute, right? Like the cute toothbrush. And the kids are like, nice, throw it in the bin.
Now we're thinking about your oral hygiene on this Christmas day. You know?
Santa left you floss.
Yes.
May- maybe that was a sign. How many cavities did you have like as a kid? Where did you have a lot?
I don't, I don't think this is a fair conversation to have. Yeah.
Were your parents like trying to tell you, hey, 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 Santa's trying to save us some money here.
Yeah, we're trying to watch it. Yeah.
All right. Okay. Dawn, what was, and you, you had an interesting childhood. I'd be curious to see what, what you've got going on there.
I mean, I hate anything with stupid sayings on it, especially when people think, hey, he likes baseball or he likes golf or he likes whiskey. Here's a little trinket that has some pun or something on it about an interest I have. No, give me the F-ing whiskey. Give me the F-ing baseball cards, even, and I'm going on another rant here and this is probably an HOA somewhere. Can you find a laundry bin these days that doesn't have wash me or laundry service or any of the other crap on it? I've been searching for months for those things. So don't give me Target art. Don't give me stuff that has stupid little sayings on it. Give me the real thing.
Uh, how about the Ray Dunn coffee cups that say something like, you know, drink or tea or coffee. That's all I've got is a challenge from you now to think about what's the worst coffee cup I can find for you.
I was just gonna say, you just sealed your Christmas gift for the next ten years.
Yep.
I know, I know. Don't give me, don't give me a couch pillow with some dumb saying on it or anything like that.
So the motivational framed golf course picture on your desk, that's like, top of your list, right? Man, we've hit on some
We're gonna get a kitchen sign for him. A kitchen ki- sign that says eat.
Eat, yeah. Eat, be joyful. We, it's a bountiful harvest. Yeah, I love those things. Uh, all right. Right. On the other lightning, lightning questions, what was a memorable, was one of your better Christmas? Did you go somewhere fun? Did you experience something unique, some memory that, that you had that, uh, really sticks with you?
Oh, mine's so non-traditional. My, my favorite actual Christmas, uh, my husband's in law enforcement, so our holidays never always land on the holidays. But now that we're at Empty Nest, the best one is we went to the Oregon coast, you know, had a room with a little kitchenette, got Chinese food. Walked the ocean, like, non-traditional as it could be, but yes, you phase out of life. You know, Christmas looks different.
So looking forward to a year like that.
Yeah, Christmas looks different.
But, but did the rental place kitchen have little sayings all over it that, you know?
No, it was like a nineteen seventies type motel that just has the kitchenette. It was, it's, it's great. Great hideaway.
Mine, I'll tell you one that stuck out with me and I've done this with my kids. To my parents' credit, you know, uh, they, every now and then, I remember that, like, he probably did this, you know, and they'd send you on some sort of a journey, a clue journey that would go from one to the next, or to some grand, you know, president that they wanted you to enjoy that process and sending you all around the house and around the neighborhood a little bit. And you'd have to go find a little clue and I don't know. They did that a few times to me and I thought, but this is pretty fun, you know, and um, I've done that with my girls as well. And it's, it's kind of a tradition, I guess, that sort of carried on. I think we did that last year with them because we, we bought them tickets to go see Katy Perry, which was in and of itself, a whole different show. Uh, but nevertheless, the journey to find those tickets uh, was a fun one. So that's it. I'm afraid, I'm afraid.
I know. Wait, I gotta tell one of my memory because this was a little more benign before Dawn gets there. My parents growing up, and I've considered this with my kids, is we always get str- scratched off lottery tickets and everybody's stockings. And so it does stretch out longer than, than everybody kind of sees who, who gets the most. And there was always a rule that if it was over, the winning was over a certain amount, you had to share it back with Santa.
Yeah, yes.
It, it never, it rarely ever happened, but that's a fun tradition that we do.
I could see Santa being into the gambling, you know, I could see that. So, all right. Wait, easy, easy.
Oh, he's so excited. He's so excited.
Hey, take a drink first. Let's, you know.
Pretty, but I could go with a very memorable one that, that turned out to be memorable for good reasons and then turned not so good a, a month later. But I'm gonna go with one, this is gonna date me a little bit, um, because it involves an answering machine and a camcorder. So there you go. You can figure out where in the, uh, also getting the Nintendo with Duck Hunt timeframe that this occurred. Of course, I'm in, you know, early high school or something, wanted an answering machine. So my mom's like, well, I guess we'll get Santa to, to bring him one and, um,
I've never known somebody of that age ask you for an answering machine, but.
I didn't want like some stupid pillow with a saying on it. So I don't give my mom any options.
Answering machine.
What kind of ego did you, what kind of ego did you have that you thought you expected this many calls? I mean,
I was waiting on that recruitment call to try out for the Chicago Cubs or something like that. So, uh, anyway, somebody there on Christmas morning is recording me in my PJs, you know, opening up this present to get the answering machine, right? And it's one of like the Sears camcorder that, you know, gives you neck strain afterwards because it's sitting on your shoulder for too long. And I open it up and there's no answering machine in it. It's just like the Styrofoam packaging in the box. And I'm like looking around at my seat. I'm looking around where I am and in the pile of wrapping paper and boxes and stuff going, did it fall out? What the hell happened? I don't know about this. My mom had gotten the box from display version. Probably at Walmart or something. And therefore there was no answering machine to be had. So.
She tricked you?
Uh, well, no, she didn't do it.
It was probably an accident.
But we also had to go back to Walmart and be like,
Oh, so she just made a mistake that it wasn't actually, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But I got made fun of for several years and replaying that video of me like looking around thinking, hey, the thing had to have fallen out somewhere. It's got to be around here somewhere.
You have a lot of therapy moments. There's a lot of therapy.
Uh, fourteen, fifteen, I don't know.
My god. Okay. Another call to our listeners. If you happen to find in a dump somewhere, a cassette tape that happens to be a young Costelik telling his, the people he called, what the message was. I want to hear that. I was, I, I want to know what your message was to the people who called you because I don't think it was basic. I don't think you were like, hi, this is Dawn. Or hi, this is Dan. Uh, I need you to leave a message at the beep. I think you, this was the era of, remember the, the infomercial where you could buy the stupid jingles that you would have on answering machines?
I'm glad you called, but I'm not home and I'll be back before too long.
No, I feel like, I feel like instead we should just finish the episode a bit with like, so Dawn, what would be your recording? Put yourself back into your fourteen-year-old self.
Clearly you're not calling me for a date, but if we're here to talk about baseball, leave your message at the beep.
I was probably the fourteen-year-old that had something like Steely Dan or James Taylor playing in the background as I kind of recorded the message on it or something like that.
Well, that explains why you didn't have all the dates leaving voicemails.
Uh, yeah, I never connected that either.
Ah, okay. On that note, well, all right. I think that has been cathartic, helpful. We all need some nog and everything else or not nog, I guess, in Sabrina's case. So let's move on and, and finish this episode. We appreciate it. Planning for the snow on an open right-of-way. Um, I'm gonna move forward and we're just gonna remind our listeners, head on over www dot theplanningcommissionpodcast dot com. Subscribe, like, and hopefully give us some ideas. So commissioners, happy holidays. Hope it's been a good year for you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
He's not gonna second it.
Second, second.
I'm ringing the, I'm ringing the jingle bells here. I thought you could do that.
I thought he still wanted more therapy.
Yes, well, apparently.
I'm making that appointment right now.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. And here's to a good, wonderful twenty twenty-four. See you later. Hey, everybody. Commissioner Danley here. Would you like to see more, hear more? Well, we've got you covered. Go to our website, www dot theplanningcommissionpodcast dot com. It's got everything you want. Guests, yep, past episodes, the video, the audio, even our whiskey pairing, links to everything about all the people we've had on, books, websites, you name it. It's unbelievable. You want to reach out to us? Please, we'd be more than happy to chat. You can email us, planningcommissionpodcast at gmail dot com. You want to tweet at us? Go for it. At Planning Commish. We're also on YouTube with the Planning Commission Podcast channel, Facebook. Heck, send us a carrier pigeon if you need to. We'd love to hear from you about ideas, guests, you name it. Thank you for listening. We appreciate it. We'll keep doing our thing. You keep doing yours. Have a good one.